I just turned.
You need to double check, you want to make sure it's going back and forth over there. We'll see.
Okay.
All right, we're live, Tony.
Yeah, we're live.
I just microphone and your double check.
Call to order the September ninth, 2024 meeting, Leupson County Planning Commission. May I get roll call first?
Yes, Madam Chair, Mr. Pitts?
Yes, Madam.
Chair McCandley?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Here.
Vice Chair Dawson?
Here.
Mr. Fallon?
Here.
We have forum, Madam Chair?
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the adoption of the August 12 regular meeting. You have the minutes in your pack. Thank you. Do I have any changes, additions to that? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the minutes. That's my statement.
Okay, so we have a second. All in favor? All right. Okay, next on our agenda is old business item three. It's an application for special exception, SPX 2024 dash zero four, MK LJ Holdings, 3116 Crest Highway, State Route 74, parcel zero two three dash zero two one. The public hearing for this was continued from the previous meeting. I know that, and I was not here, so I believe there's additional information that Mr. Smith has.
Right, you've got the rolls up there.
Yeah, yeah. So we will let, Matt, you would like to come forward and discuss anything that you've added, or if you have something to say additional?
No, ma'am, I don't.
You don't? Okay, that's fine. All right. Okay, I only have one person on the list to speak. Sonia Dovey? Okay, you would please come forward, state your name and address, of course.
Good evening, my name is Sonia Dovey. I live at 140 Crescent Road, which is a stone's throw from this proposed site. I did speak at the last meeting as well and requested a copy of the information that was supposed to be provided by Mr. Smith and only saw it tonight. So I'm kind of going by the seat of my pants here. I did not get it before walking in this meeting. I do still have some serious concerns. We do have wetland in that area. Again, I mentioned at the previous meeting about the impervious paving there and the water runoff and how that's going to affect the marshland and the wetland there. And I don't see anything that addresses that. Furthermore, I do see on the Georgia Soil and Water Conservation Committee on their site, it says the guidelines for soil disturbance near a body of water, a stream, or marshland should be 200 feet. And based on the plaque that I see, I don't see any of that being more than 200 foot from that marshland. Furthermore, I don't see that there's a topography map to show us what are the elevations, where's the water runoff going to be, what's the impact to the surrounding area? Do we know if a topography study's been done, a soil erosion study? Do we know if that's been done?
Doug, do we have that included in any of this? No.
I mean, that's...
I don't see it from what I have.
That's also required, especially if you're, you know, you're working right next to marshlands and a stream leads right into spruil bluff. That's one of our gems of the area. We don't need all that sediment and all the crud and the oil and the gas and everything else that comes from these things running off down the doorway or into the marsh. Obviously, I'm definitely opposed. There are a lot of other reasons. I appreciate Mr. Smith actually cleaning up his area. They were issuing one on Crest Highway where he removed some silt fencing that had been laying there for many months so he could take a picture to include there. I have the pictures from right before that, but that was after I complained at the previous meeting. So that's my concern.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So if we have no, no other people signed up to speak, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the public hearing is closed. Let me get your presentation.
Absolutely. Before I begin, you also have a letter from a Tanya Hudson-Anderson on this topic. She emailed in her concerns, and you should have a copy of that in the materials that were just handed tonight. So I just want to make sure that you have that. All right, as you've heard, the applicant is MK LJ Holdings. This is a 7.8 acre site at the intersection of Crest Highway and Old Alabama Road. There are two zoning districts in work here, at work, C2 zoning and then the gateway corridor overlay since the parcel touches 74. So if this is approved by the Board of Commissioners, those two issues will certainly be of concern, especially the GC1, which dictates some design guidelines. Of course, the reason why we're here is because many warehouses are a special exception in the C2. So we understand that that's a possibility, and that's the purpose of a special exception is to indicate that this, this is probably a good idea in this location, but we need to make each case individually, take a look at it, and see if there are any specific conditions that should be imposed. Land use in the area, onsite, again, you've got C2, it's currently vacant, there's some low brush and the creek. To the north, it's very heavily wooded across Crest Highway. To the east, you've got some vacant area, then some commercial and single family. In that area, to the east, you've got sort of a mix, the AR, the R2, and that one lot where there's an air conditioning company is C2. To the south, some of it, which is across Old Alabama, you've got pasture, the wetlands, wooded area, and a creek. And then to the west, you've also got wooded area, pasture, and single family residence. As you know, you've got general use standards, which all special exceptions are to be reviewed against by this board as well as the Board of Commissioners. So going into the staff report, going through those requirements, the things that we need to look at, again, as I said earlier, this is a permitted use by special exception in the C2, whether it's detrimental to adjacent properties or the general neighborhood in terms of the built environment, people, and other structures. This type of use generates very little traffic or other impacts. Generally speaking, the use is very passive. The major impacts are going to be visual, and of course, you also have, as was referenced earlier, stormwater, especially when you've got a lot of impervious surface. So that's something that's got to be looked at, is the retention and detention. The actual calculations are done at building permit time, but you saw by the drawing that you did tonight that at least there is a space and a place where the retention and detention will go. And maintenance of these sort of things is certainly an issue. We've got other businesses in the county that we have to stay on top of because of maintenance of their stormwater retention and detention. Whether this is a nuisance or a hazard, again, everything can be a nuisance and everything can be a hazard because of the relatively quiet nature of these, they tend not to be problematic unless somebody is using the storage units as something other than for storage. In terms of the direct impact, again, on the neighbors, it should be relatively de minimis if the area is properly secured, maintained, and managed, as is true on most uses. In terms of other requirements, if this is approved, there will be payment of the occupation tax, building permits will be required for the units, and of course, there are requirements of the gateway corridor overlay that will have to be adhered to. Again, most of these aren't upfront requirements there once you develop and get approved, sort of things. Now, staff recommends denial. The reasons are the character area in this particular area. Also, this is probably, you heard that some of the other concerns about this is that this is sort of a gateway to spruil bluff. It's a major intersection, a major corner, where a lot of traffic that is concerned and of concern and will be affected by the appearance of the community. I would think that this location, we want something that's a bit of a gem and something that's aesthetically pleasing and probably retail oriented, whatever that might be, recognizing that it is already zone C2. There was some request for additional material. You've got what was submitted, the elevation drawings, you've got photographs of the design of one of the other projects that he's got. Of course, design signage, if it was a freestanding sign, would have to be monument style. I think you'll see that he sort of proposed things on the fence, very similar to the other locations. Now, if you do choose to approve this, there are certainly conditions that we need imposed, maintenance of the retention ponds and landscaping, construction consistent with the plans that are submitted. And again, we don't have construction plans yet. This is the land use portion of approval. Those technical plans come later. And they also have to address the gateway corridor issues. And we need to make sure that these are individual compartmentalized spaces for warehousing and not used for any other active type of use. All right, so this is the aerial showing you the intersection. And here's the zoning. You can see the zoning in the area is predominantly AR, but to the east, you've got the R2, and you do have one other spot there, C2, where the HVAC company is. Now, this was one of the submittals with the original very rough sort of plan, not quite as detailed as the one that you were submitted, was submitted tonight. And a general overlay of the units, general layout. And again, this is a smaller version of that roll that you've got up there that gives you more detail and an idea of what the units will look like. Photographs of the area. This is looking further west on 74. South on Old Alabama and into the property itself. Again, due west, looking into the property. This is from the north, looking southeast. You see immediately across the street, it's not developed, it's the HVAC company's one lot over. And this looking south. Again, this is looking south on South Alabama, Old Alabama. This is looking into the lot. And this has been highly disturbed in the past. The wetland area and the creek are hidden by all of this brush. And actually, if you look in the staff report, you see that for whatever reason, this is not a flood zone, I guess because the area is relatively flat. So you actually have to see that the creek is out there, or at least look at it in aerial because the flood map won't tell you that. This is from inside the property, looking to the east. And this is that commercial property that's two lots over to the east. And looking from that property's driveway to this location. And that concludes the staff report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Can you go back to your version of this, your...
Sure, the small one?
Yeah, small. That helps. Can't hold it with two hands. Jeff didn't want to play nuts. All right. Any comments, questions, concerns?
I don't have any.
I don't have any, go ahead.
No, I'd like to settle on details on what it might look like and how it might tie into the surrounding area that is associated with spruil bluff, possibly.
Tony?
I think my biggest concern is the closeness to the wetland area. Is...
Yeah, that by far is my biggest concern. Okay. So with that, do I have a motion one way or the other? How do you want to...
My motion is to deny.
Okay, do you have, based on...
Based on what I've heard and heard Mr. Doug say, and based on what I see right here in the notes that I took, and what Mr. Doug said.
Okay, based on staff report? Based on the staff report?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion to deny. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All right, motion carries.
Did you?
Mr. Smith, of course, as you know, this is...
Four one.
Four one? Okay, thank you. This is a recommendation in the county commission public hearing, it will be September 10.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Now, wait, Matt, September 10. It's not September, is that...
Yeah, yeah.
It'll be October, eight. Oh, I know, because you continued it, that's why I thought it was...
Yeah, let him know.
Let him know.
Okay, so next items B and C for the text amendments, we're going to move that to after item 4D, so that we can get through these first. So we'll move to 4A, which is new business, an application for rezoning, REZ 2024 dash zero five, Sarah Ellington, 151 Grace Chapel Road, parcel 097022. Let me see here. I was going to say, I don't have that. All right. So both of these are blank. I just want to make sure there's nobody here that thinks they're speaking tonight, correct? Okay, perfect. All right, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Do you guys have any, I mean, I know you're not on here, but do you have...
I didn't know if I needed to be on there or not.
Do you have something that you want to say, or...
If you have a question you'd like to ask.
Then if you want to, just hang on, let's get Mr. Carrier's report, and I'll leave the public hearing open, if that's okay with everybody, until we, so we can, if we have questions, we can answer that. All right.
All right. And as the last time, you have additional correspondence that we just received today. As you saw in the staff report, there were a series of questions that, once I was drafting the staff report, there was additional information that I had questions about. So you'll see that there is a email from Ms. Ellington responding to eight questions and giving you some additional answers and details that we didn't have before. And there were some attachments. About opening the plant to that letter. All right. The property owner and applicant is Ms. Sarah Ellington. Now, this is a portion of a 16.43 acre. The rezoning part, remember, we got double, we got the rezoning as well as the variance, and we're going to talk about these at the same time because they're so closely related. The part that we've zoned out or zoned to the M2 is 2.4 acres, and we'll get to the configuration. You saw in the staff report, it's basically an elf shaped piece of property coming from the Grace Chapel Road to the back of the, back of the house, to the buildings that'll be part of the processing plant. And the purpose is for commercial livestock processing. And you see in the M2 zoning that this specifically is listed for approval in the M2. It's by right if you have M2 zoning, commercial livestock processing. Now, just for clarification, if the question comes up, deer processing is not the same thing. That's a by right in the AR. So they could have been, and I believe they have been, processing deer before. That's by right in the AR, so that's not a problem. It's just, just to make sure that we understand it's clear from livestock processing. So we will have the parent parcel, which remain AR, and then we've got the new parcel, the 2.4 acres. And there's clarification, do I, we have that? There was a question in my mind, I thought we were talking about 2.9 versus 2.4. Anyway, we'll go with a 2.4 unless we get it correct. The variance is the distance, and for those of you who are at the site visit, you know that to the house and the processing building are very close, so part of this would be a variance. I would say that they're in the 40 feet range, short. Normally, you would have to have front setback for the processing and the rear setback for the house, and that would add up to about 70 feet, and they're probably 40 to 50 feet short of that. So if they're going to stay with current configuration, they would need that variance. Currently, on the parent parcel, you've got the home and the under-construction processing facility, pasture area, holding pens and sheds. This is the unincorporated area, so it's very close to the city limits, but it's certainly not in the city. And they do call this the Circle E Ranch. To the north of this area, you've got pasture and single family. To the east, pasture, barns, sheds, and a pond. To the south, pasture and wooded areas. And west, across Grace Chapel, there is a single family home, wooded areas as well as pasture. And here we discuss what's the general guideline for what should be in the AR zoning and the general guideline for description of the M2 zone, I guess. Again, for rezonings, we have a different set of criteria than you had for the special exception that we just discussed, and these are those criteria. This is required by the state of Georgia as well as our own ordinance. We also have comprehensive plan that has character areas as well as policies. The character area in this particular case is active agriculture. There's the description of what an active agriculture character area would be like. And then, of course, we have goals and strategies in the comp plan. These are the ones that are pertinent to this particular operation. So in terms of the variance, again, there's the 35 feet for the AR, for the rear yard, and the 35 feet from the property line, which the new property line will run between the house and the operation. So there's the exact number of, well, approximate exact is 43 foot variance. All right, so staff analysis, this is a relatively small operation. They're not going to be processing hundreds and hundreds or thousands of cattle a day. This is a low-density residential area. Not everybody's got critters around there, at least not many. We don't have herds of 200 or 300 cattle in the neighborhood, although I'm sure everybody's got a few. So this is sort of a low-impact agricultural area and low-density residential. You've got in the information that was submitted, an approximation of forehead a day for 120 a month. I'm not quite sure how big the facility is, I didn't see that in the information. I estimated it at about 3,000 square feet. They may have added that in the additional information, I'm not sure. And then the Yatesville city limits, not very far away. I estimate it based on the parcel that is paying taxes, the city Yatesville, about 1,000 feet. That's the D mulling property. Now, just discussing the staff analysis of the zoning, you've got to have M2 if you're going to have a facility like that. This could easily be an AR by special exception, so the fact that it's an M2 spot zone doesn't give me really much heartburn here, because all they'd have to do is change it to AR, and this is certainly a function that you wouldn't be surprised to find in AR, which is the zoning that surrounds this area. And certainly, when your character area is active agriculture, I think this fits into that. Now, what I'm going to suggest is, again, if you want to recommend approval for this, that we have a maximum size measured in some way so that if for some reason the Ellingtons decide to sell, that all of a sudden, well, we're going to do 1,000 head a day, and we don't have a limitation in the zoning conditions. So I would certainly hope that we have some language for a limitation if you're going to recommend approval. Again, we just addressed the suitability. This is going to those standards that we have to look at. You do see that there's going to be an increase in truck and trailer traffic, whether you consider that a lot or not, certainly something you need to take in consideration, any odors, additional noise that are going to come with this traffic in the operation. Current economic use, as we discussed, they have been using, I think this is, a deer cooler to some degree. I'm not sure how many that they've done, but there has been a non-residential use here to some degree in terms of the processing of deer. Obviously, the property's not vacant, and whenever we look at these threat of health, safety, welfare, and nuisance, the bottom line is it's always going to be how well is it maintained and how smoothly the operation is run. So this could be one of the best processing plants, you know, in the whole country, or it could be one of the worst ones, that all comes down to ownership and whether they maintain it and keep the operation running smoothly and not becoming a nuisance or having issues. Obviously, you do have the issues just with any cattle and any animals that could happen. They just happen in agricultural areas. Hopefully, we don't have too many cattle that get out of the pens, et cetera, but that's true of any operation that's got this sort of cattle or other sort of livestock animals. There'll be no overtaxing the public utilities since they won't be relying on any other than the road. And again, we talked about adverse impacts to the environment, would not be any different than what... than what a traditional farm would be. You also have additional information in the submittal that we got about the operation incinerator. For those of you in the site visit, we don't have the incinerator there yet, so that's not something that you saw when you were onsite. So the staff recommendation, in this particular case, there was a series of questions that I had, so if you feel those questions were answered by the submittal that we've got, that's good. And if you've got additional questions yourself to clarify some of those points. There are reasons for approval. This is a rural area, it's zoned AR. This is a very small facility compared to what other processing plants could be. This is an agriculture county, and we have a population of cattle, not just at this location, but all over the county. And it's certainly suitable in the active agricultural character area. For denial, you may feel that this is too small a lot, and it's too close to the non-agricultural uses, specifically onsite and maybe offsite. City of Yatesville is not very far away. And of course, there will be additional traffic impacts. Hopefully, you've got enough information to decide if there are going to be any impacts from that incinerator. Obviously, that's a scary word, if you're the next-door neighbor, to have an incinerator next door. So I would recommend that if you're going to recommend approval, that somehow we limit the size in the future, so that, again, if it grows, it's limited to a certain size. And then, we don't currently have a survey or a legal description of that 2.4 acres, so we'll need that for the creation of the ordinance that adopts the zoning if it is approved. So this gives you an idea where the branch is, that's 74 up above. And of course, Grace Chapel is the road that goes next to the property. And you can see this relatively grid-patterned, denser development, that's the city of Yatesville right there. And this is the close-up area from the tax assessor's website. And this is their rough sketch of where that rezoning area would be, this L shape which comes along the edge of the property, and then includes the facilities that you'll see the photographs, and of course, you saw on your site visit. And there's the layout of the building. This is the zoning map surrounded by AR. There's nothing else close other than AR, except for the city of Yatesville that doesn't have zoning. And we'll go into the photographs. This is the entrance looking into the property from Grace Chapel, further up the driveway. Obviously, in the back there, you can see the processing facility being built. And this is from the road looking to that north side of the property. And this is straight at the house itself. And then, the south side of the property, from the front, from the road. And this is looking south on Grace Chapel, gives you an idea of what the next-door's area looks like. This is the house that is across the street in that area. And we're looking north on Grace Chapel from the property. And this is the house that's up there, on the same side. And this is behind the house, the house is to the right, and then you can see the facility being developed, but built behind it. This is the house. So you can see the relative distance, the house, and how close it is to the processing facility. This is the back of the buildings. And this is the chute area where the cattle will be brought in, to between the building and that concrete wall. This is the pasture behind us in the photograph, and the cattle will be brought in there and into the processing. There's one of the pens, I presume, to either hold them or bring them in from the pasture. Again, the pasture that is behind the buildings. And this is the one cooler, there are a couple of coolers in the building. If you need a better description of the building itself, the photos didn't come up too well inside the building, so, and there's a lot of construction going on, so I'm not sure the photos would have been that educational. And that concludes the staff report management.
Thank you. Just, I know Joel and I were out there last week, Mr. Currier. Just to make sure that I understood it, so the house will eventually become the office-slash-supply area, storage area, if you will. And how many square feet is the facility that you're building out, everything under roof?
Everything on the roof, total, about 31 feet.
Any other questions?
Is the house going to be in the area that's rezoned, or is the house outside of the rezoning?
The house is, it's outside of it, but it will be-
But it will be part of the operation, so why wouldn't it be in the zone area, if it's going to become part of the operation?
Well, we've got to keep living there, I think.
Yeah. Because what, my understanding is, once that becomes, you're looking to build a house.
Yes.
Once they build a house and move out of that, that becomes part of the operation, then they will come back-
Yes.
-and add that in?
My question, I have a question. In the staff report, it says it could certainly be, it's easily just listed as a special exception in AR, in AR district, instead of rezoning to the M2, I mean, give me the-
Well, you'd have to amend, you'd have to do, I'm not saying you can do that now, you can't, that's not listed, but if you logically think about how our zoning works, why wouldn't you list maybe a facility like this in the AR as a special exception? Our zoning doesn't say that, but if you're concerned about spot zoning, this is absolutely spot zoning, there's no M2 anywhere around. But, again, sometimes it's the technicalities versus the way things really operate. And so in this case, I don't think any of us would say, no, you would never put this as a special exception in AR. I'm just saying, your code doesn't do that, it doesn't allow for that. So, this is really the only route that you have, is to go to the M2, because-
Because it's not presently part of that. Okay, that answers my question. I mean, I have no problem with being, you know, M2, but if it was something that was already set in place, why?
Yeah, what makes it have to go that route?
What makes it have to go that route?
Well, that might be a future amendment that you would want to suggest.
Yeah. That answers my question.
We have in the past, and Upson County had facilities somewhat like this. We don't have anything right now, so if I, as a matter of fact, I have in process right now a need for this type of operation, I'm going to have to go out of the county to facilitate that. We have in the past had a number of operations that were properly managed, overlooked by state facilities. And I think that this is, this would be an opportunity for Upson County, becoming able to have somebody process their meat locally, and finish that product. In other words, they're going to wrap it, they're going to freeze it, and they're going to label it, and we're going to take it back home and cook it and eat it. So, based on what I saw in the tour that we took, you know, I'm on board with this. So I think it's an opportunity for the county and the people of Upson County.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay. So first off, let me, now that we've kind of done that, let me get a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Okay. All right. Now, we're doing the rezoning, that fly man is vicious. We're doing the rezoning, are we doing, do you need us to do these separately?
Yeah, you do them separately. I'm not sure that the order matters.
Matters, yeah.
Even, you would have to, even if you're recommending denial for one, you would do it the same for both, so, which, I would, you need to consider those separately, just decide which one you want to take on first, and probably, if you're going to recommend approval for the facility, then granting the variance would make sense, I guess, second. I guess that does make sense.
So let's go that route. I would like to see some language around some of the conditions that is in this report. One of the things that I would like to see in addition to this, is if it is ever sold, that person has to come back to us and show us their approval, USDA, state of Georgia approval, to make sure that we continue on with a compliant owner.
And I think limiting the capacity to what they're asking for.
Yeah. And that's, yeah, that was my other thing, is within that-
You know, if you want to expand, you have to come back again. It's hard for us to put a number on it, but you've asked us to send that number, you know, we can-
Yeah.
Is that a restriction that we can, that we can add to it?
It can only be a certain size beyond that.
Well, the size, I'm not understanding, but the requirement, if it's sold, they'd have to come back and make sure that we, that that's something we can apply to this.
Well, and you know, for instance, the special event venues, you do that every time.
Right.
It's only granted to these particular people.
I just want to make sure that if somebody, if it was sold, and Person A buys it, Person A is able to, one, get it state-approved, and USDA-approved. Not everybody, not everybody can do that. We want to make sure that before that happens, that person is, follows that, that process.
I'm with you, I want to make sure that it's-
Okay. So, having had that discussion, do I have a recommendation, one way or the other, and if it's for approval, please list the conditions that you-
I'll recommend the approval for the M2, with the size restrictions, and also with the restriction that if it's sold, the new owners would have to come back for approval to show their state approval, license and-
And USDA.
USDA, USDA, yes.
And just to clarify, that that size is 3,150 square feet?
The existing size.
The existing size today?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I have a second there.
Okay. All in favor? Okay.
All right, Madam Chair, I just want to clarify the language on the fact, this is just for the Ellingtons.
Yep.
That if it's sold, your traditional ordinance is that if it's sold, it has to come back, but in this case, you just want assurance, or if they can document that they've got their USDA, USDA and their Georgia, they don't need to come back to you, just they just, this new person that buys it needs to show those certifications, licenses.
Correct, and these, I think I'm saying this right, please tell me if I'm not, but these conditions will remain, will follow it?
Yes.
With the new owners.
Size, everything.
Size and everything else follows it with the new owner.
Proof of-
Yep.
And we're including number three, where we need the survey and the legal description.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. For, now for the variance that we talked about. This is, we're talking about the back of the house to the facility, knowing this is only a temporary kind of thing until the, until their house is built. Based on that, what we know that variance to be, do I have a motion?
Are, are we going to put a timeline on this?
Put that as a condition, I mean, I don't know if you-
How long are we going to let them reside at the house, if we don't put a timeline on it?
What's your process?
Three years.
Three years.
Any other issues with this? So, for the variance, do I have a motion, one way or the other, to approve that, what is it, 40, 41 feet?
43.
43.
Round numbers.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept it, with the exceptions that the three, putting the term time limit on to three years.
Do I have a second?
Say.
All in favor?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
All right, again, so this has been a recommendation for approval, and I apologize to you, the previous case, but this will go to the October 8th Board of Commissioners, this is the recommendation, the planning commission, to the Board of Commissioners, who makes the final decision.
All right. Okay.
Weeks.
Yep. Item C is the application for special exception, SPX 2024-05, Lori Weeks, 534 Longtown Road, parcel 097-025. Okay, do I have a motion to open the public hearing for this? Okay. Do I have a second? All in favor? So I have on here Jason Weeks.
I thought I had to sign that paper.
Okay, do you have, you don't have anything to present, or?
I'm with her, so.
Okay. All right. Then do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Say.
All in favor? Okay. Do I have a year?
All right, the applicant and property owner is Lori Weeks, and she has requested approval from Upson County for a special exception, for a special event venue. The application talks about three acres, that's not even, that's not in consideration, the minimum is five acres, so this is a 20-acre lot, but the facility, the special event venue, needs to be considered five of those 20 to even qualify, so while they requested three, we have to stipulate five of the 20 acres as part of the facility. As you're aware, indoor and outdoor special event venues are permitted by special exception in the AR. This is, I believe, our fifth one of these that we've been through. And the area it's zoning is AR. This is a very limited development in the area, to the north, you've got pasture and congrove. To the east, very heavily wooded, with various trees. South, there's a pond there, and that, I'll call it a lighthouse art piece. I'm not sure it qualifies to anything other than art, but anyway. There's also pasture and congrove there, and to the west, it's heavily wooded and pasture. Got those general review standards that we talked about earlier. Staff analysis, special event venues are listed as permitted uses, therefore, they're at least potentially allowed in this zoning district. You just have to look at the particular area and what might apply if in the unique circumstance. Those other venues that have come through here are Harper, actually, it's the barn at Harper Pines, 33 Frog Hollow Events, the barn at Callaway Pond, and last year, the Quiller property, which is on Gordon School Road. All of those went through the same process. Again, you see in the report, and in the aerial, there's not a whole lot else around here, this used to be the congrove, so there's a whole lot of trees and not- This used to be the congrove. So there's a whole lot of trees and not a lot of people. So you're not going to have a lot of hazard issues or issues with the neighbors with the impacts. Now, they can't happen if this, again, isn't properly maintained or managed. The other requirements that might be included if this is approved, if they decide to go without the hall with the facility, they would have to get that license, payment of the occupation tax, of course, building permits for any facilities that are constructed for the special events. And if they're going to clear the area, any land disturbance permits for anything over an acre. Staff recommended approval. Now, what you have here, and I won't go through all of these because these are the traditional requirements that you've imposed on all the other ones. The only one here that you might have issue with is, I believe, they only talked about a maximum of 150 participants being allowed. Normally, 300 is the number. If you want to lower it, I guess you can talk to the applicants or just leave it where it is. But 300, we just, even if it's not asked for, is a number we tend to give. Again, and this is, we just alluded to this, the special exception is approved for Lori Weeks and Fay Holston, who is listed as the other property owner. This is not transferable to any other person. They would have to go back through the special exception. Again, this is a uniform, is the same condition that you've had on other facilities. And of course, you are making a recommendation. You can approve, approve with conditions or just recommend denial. Here's an aerial photograph. Now, unlike the other facility you saw, which was to the west of Yatesville, this is to the south of Yatesville. This dense development here, you see, is the city limits, not too far away. Just close up, you can see the remnants of the rows of the pecan trees on both sides of, of Longtown Road. Oops. There we go. And this is the rough graphic. You may have questions for them, but it was explained to me that the, the house will not be part of the facilities. There are some other small amenities in the front yard. The only thing, and you'll see this in your packet, might be that walled-in garden area that might be part of the facility. But I'm told that for the most part, it'll be back here in the pecan grove. They'll clear, build anything out there.
Is that a separate drive from the?
It's just over, there's not really a drive. It's just dirt. So they'd be bringing them in, maybe that driveway that.
Is that the same driveway for the house as the facility?
Not necessarily the same driveway. It's just that everything's really close right there.
Got to go, yeah.
Now, they did submit in their packet what the pavilion might look like. Obviously, there's nothing built out there right now. So this is the rendering that they put in the packet. This is the house, which they told is not part of the event center. But just so that you know what you're looking at in front of the property, this is that house. And then this is the cleared area behind it that is mowed. And then, as you go further back, the ground cover is a little bit higher. They don't mow it all. Facility would be somewhere back in the old road. Now, this is at the front. They may have some part of the reception or the events in this garden, which is next to the house, up close to the road. I guess that just, this is unique to the house and they thought they might use this as part of the facility. And that concludes the staff report, Madam Chair.
Okay. Any questions, issues, concerns?
I looked at that pitch property yesterday. I didn't, I didn't see a problem at all.
Oh, the, the rendering and the drawing that you got, that is, I'm near to, that is what you're going to build? Is that really what you're going to build? Or are you just close to that or, you know?
We would love to close it eventually.
Okay.
We just don't have the finance to do that.
Oh, yeah.
Start with something like that.
Start with the brick columns and the wood trusses and such. Are you on onsite bathroom facilities? Or are you just going to use porta johns?
For now, porta johns. Eventually, we'd like to get to a place where we can have a onsite restroom, septic tank.
Anything else?
I don't.
All right. In that case, do I have a motion, one way or the other?
I make a motion to approve it, staff recommendations with the requirements that we have imposed on the rest of them.
So A through K?
A through K.
It's been under standards. And I'll say it.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. And again, as I said to the others, October 8th, this is the recommendation that will go to the Board of Commissioners. So it will be six o'clock on October 8th in Nesterlin. Just different time.
All right. Item D, application for special exception, SPX 2024-06. Donald and La Monica Hamilton, US Highway 19, parcel 061-023. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Make a motion to open it public here.
Do I have a second?
Say.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So I'll just go down this list in order. First on the list is Donald Hamilton. If you'd come up to one of the marks, state your name and address for us.
Yes, ma'am. Praise Lord and good evening. I'm Donald Hamilton. I'm among them. My beautiful wife here. My address is 3270 Triumph Road here in Thompson, Georgia, where we've been there for over 26 years. Been taxing affairs here in Upson County. We're law-abiding citizens here in Upson County, love to serve our community. Amen. We started ministry here in Upson County five years ago. Have seen our ministry to grow from three to over 50 members, not counting visitors, members of other churches that come to worship with us. And when their church and our haven church, they come and worship God with us also. We are currently renting the old town silver, old silver town dry cleaners on A Street. Since we've been there, the atmosphere has changed. You know, people are coming to church, loving God. The community start cleaning up and picking up after themselves, just seeing the presence of God, just working in the area. Amen. As our ministry starts to grow, we're seeing that we're in need of a bigger place of worship. My son and I began to seek out available locations to relocate. A few places listed on the staff recommendations of denial of uses of churches, which I talked to Mr. Doug about, what he didn't know, that I know Ms. Jan Knight, and she used to manage some rental property. So I asked her, could she see and look out for places that I may be able to rent out or be able to move in? On that recommendation, I did go to the church on Grace Point on Bronburg Highway. I checked it out. It's dilapidated, crawling with snakes all over the farm. I went to Indian Trail and checked out the church there. That was what Mr. Knight had recommended. There, dilapidated also, have a graveyard all the way around the church. You pull in the driveway, you can't, ain't nowhere to park, just on, in front of the property. And got old graves that's been there since the 1800s. I was just amazed about looking at the graves and how they kept them up. Also, church on Jeff Davis Road, 2,000 square feet, in which we already in 2,000, we already in hot growth there. The selling price was 179,000, way too much and not room for growth, being one acre. The church on West Morning Road is dilapidated. The roof is collapsing. The ceiling is hanging on the floor. I talked to the lab pastor of the church that, before it closed, and that Pastor Cecil Hutchins of Thompson. He told me the problem that he had with plumbing, the sewage, and the other problems, and the cost wasn't worth the headache. And it was owned by Amy Church and Maiko. So I did my due diligence, looking for availability to move in a nice facility. You know, the facility that we're renting, nice place, nice area. I love the community. But we have outgrown it. And so we're seeking and asking the board for your blessings to consider a special exception that we may be able to go out in the country.
All right. Thank you. Next on the list is Fay Todd. If you would, state your name and address.
Fay Todd. It's a late night, I wouldn't ask you to say. Excuse my phone going off while I'm there. It was, oh, must be God calling me. Gee, but I'm here tonight because I live in the, in the area that you, well, well.
Please, please talk to us, if you don't mind. And talk loud enough so that you want to move your microphone, your recorder over, just in case.
We was riding down from our house to town and we saw the sign, the zoning sign. Well, we thought it was just an advertisement on the road. But then I realized, I said, no, it's zoning, you know. There's nothing been built down that way forever. So we stopped and we went off to the road and saw where it said something about a church, but we didn't know for sure. That's why I'm here tonight, to see what's going on in my community, you know. Reverend Pastor, Pastor's wife, over 40 something years, retired now. So if they preaching God, Almighty, I'm all for it. Is that all you have to say?
If that's all you have to say, that's fine. Thank you. All right. I have no one else on there, on the list, so can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have your?
All right, as you heard, the applicants and property owners are Donald and La Monica Hamilton. This is 3.91 acres on US Highway 19. The property is zone AR, therefore, we're here for the special exception. And it's also subject to the gateway corridor ordinance. And before I forget, you should have a letter, an email in your packet from Mr. Holder. He is a substantial property owner around this particular property, hundreds and hundreds of acres. And I believe his, his comments are against the application. As you see in the AR zoning, it does list churches in the God's chapels, et cetera, as potential special exceptions in the AR zone. This area can be a little hard to find because it is so undeveloped and uniformly wooded. So the markers to indicate where you are, it's on the east side of 19, almost directly across Martin Church Road, which is on the west side, and north of Birdsong Road. On site, it's very heavily wooded. To the north, similar, heavily wooded. To the east, there's single family, a few single family homes and also heavily wooded. And again, south across US 19, lots and lots of trees. And to the west, you have Martin Church Road and the area around it heavily wooded, all zoned AR. Character area in this particular area is forestry. There's the description of what is expected to be in the forestry area and a couple of the goals and strategies that might apply to this particular case. And with the other special exceptions, we also, this one, we have our guidelines, the standards we're supposed to be using for evaluation. Here's the staff analysis using those. Again, this is not contrary to the ordinance because churches are listed as a potential special exception. Detrimental to the adjacent properties, again, just as the similar ones. Number one, there is not a whole lot of development here. There's some single family residential units further south than 19 on the same side. But it's like anything, it's how well is it maintained and is the management operating it properly? Then you don't have to worry about any general detrimental impacts or nuisances or hazards. And again, any effect should be minimal if this is approved. The other requirements we would expect to come up if this is approved would, of course, be building permits for any structures, potentially a land disturbance permit if they clear more than an acre. Have to have a proper address signed, posted. There'd be a DOT driveway permit required on US 19. And of course, the design requirements will have to meet the gateway corridor requirements for the signage as well as architectural standards of the buildings that are built there. Staff plan by the county or anybody else that this should be a commercially zoned area. This would be the first commercial zoning or type use in this particular area. It's not a logical place where we would start commercialization. Maybe at the intersection with 80 or some other major road coming into 19 on the south side would make sense. Or even where the development on the south side of the city is happening. But basically, this is the middle of nowhere. There are, and again, I don't address the particular specifics of the other potential uses. And obviously, because they're established and already there, there's ownership. And you would, they would have to deal with that particular ownership. You're going to spend money either to build new facilities or you would spend money to repair the existing facilities. So it's just a matter of how much money you can spend, whether it's fixing something up or building something brand new. And he did properly mention these particular churches. And I've got photos to show you what those facilities do look like and they do need improvement. All right. And there are some graphics that were attached by the applicant. So this is sort of a rendering of what they expect that the outside of the church would be and then the layout. One of the concerns you see in the letter from Mr. Holder was the parking. I did not do a parking calculation to see if those spaces match the number of seats that are inside. That would not be a difficult calculation to do. But he was, that was one of his concerns, is whether they planned for enough parking. And obviously, his property is to the upper side, which would be to the north side. He expressed concern that overflow would be on his property. And again, this is closer in, the general site plan. And we explained to him what the signage would have to look like, so you'll see a basic concept drawing of what the sign would look like. And this would be the internal layout of the church. All right. So here you see the aerial where this is located. You can see the individual, some of the individual homes to the south and Mr. Holder's property to the north and to the east. And this is basically, I think, the edge. Again, it's tall, heavily wooded. There's not really anything to look at from the ground level except trees. So you can see this is the edge where the homes start to the south. And then this is looking on the same side of the street to the north. You can see the posted sign there. Significant right of way, and then you've got the property. Now, I did go and visit some of the other churches that are vacant and need a congregation to fill them. This was the Indian Trail. And yes, all of them need work, some more than others. So this is Indian Trail, former Zion Chapel Methodist Church. This is the former Grace Point Church. Now, we did look this up and you see these cars here. This might have sold to a family, I guess, to live in. So I'm not sure that somebody who just bought in January would be willing to sell the church. But I know that this was for sale for quite a, a time. Been empty for a while.
It is sold.
It is sold.
Yes, in January was sold, I guess, to a family.
Yes.
This building is right in front of it. Before my time with the county, apparently, the church that we just looked at was going to move into this facility. And this actually already has approval as a special exception church. It just, they never moved into it for whatever reason. You may require, quite a few remember. You may require, quite a few, remember, quite a few years ago, there was an attempt to rezone this to commercial, I guess it was a C2, and that was denied. Again, but it still bears the special exception approval as a church, so they wouldn't have to do anything except whatever renovations they want to make, and they could move in as soon as they bought it. I don't know what the status is of the, for sale. I believe it's an Howard State company that owns it, and of course, we don't know what the price would be. And this is the one that was addressed earlier, 591 West Moore's Crossing. You can see it, it's a very narrow property. It's a, and while this photo doesn't show it, there is a lot of roof damage that would have to be repaired, and I certainly don't know what would have to happen on the inside. And that concludes the staff report, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Questions? Concerns?
With this drive coming off of 19, would DOT require decelerating? To be added there?
I don't, I can't speak for DOT.
I mean, would this be in a church coming in off there? I just wondered if the state would require you having to add a decelerating lane to it?
I think they would. I think they might have mentioned one of the last meetings we talked about, the church in North Town, they did, they came in off the highway, they had to have a decelerating lane.
That would be my question. And, please.
Am I able to speak?
Sure. If you want to answer that.
Yes, I had, when I purchased the property, I wanted to see about timbering the land because I'm in that kind of business, and I had some budgets that were timbering the land. And so I had one of the DOT guys that put in the driveways, and he thought we was going to build a house, and I told him that we're going to build, like, build a house of worship. And he told me, well, you couldn't put just a regular pipe in there. If it was going to be a house, you could, but he just told me that you have to have a COVID pipe put in off there. You don't have to have the decelerating lane to come in there, just as long as you make it wide enough for two cars, well, car coming in, car coming out, to have that COVID pipe put in there.
Thank you. Did you have something else?
I don't know, it's, you know, whether this is appropriate, not appropriate, or what, but, you know, I'm just, I'm looking at your property here and what's useful in it. Are you putting God in a box when you can only have a 100-seat facility right here? Yeah, I'm just saying, it's a tight, you don't have any ability to enlarge right here from this property, is what I'm saying, that to be able to, you know, as you grow, because you've grown, outgrown where you're at now. Because, I mean, I've been in the church myself for so many years, and we, we kind of, as we built, we put God in a box and didn't, okay, we didn't plan good enough for what God was going to do, and limited it, and it created a whole bar rebuilding, and rebuilding, and rebuilding, is what I'm saying. And that's just my personal opinion, throwing out to you, that you've grown tremendously so far, and I don't, I don't see that you have space that, you know, God blesses you, and I pray he does, you know, how can you grow? I mean, that's my only question with this piece of property. How could you grow? I mean, that, and that's not, that's not meant as a negative, that's meant as a positive, that, you know, you expect growth from God. I mean, that's, that's all I'm saying.
My, just counting on here, off of your diagram, you've got 35 parking places, but you're going to have 100, 100 chairs.
See, that's the schematic of the building, so we couldn't get a whole, you have to pay for architectural plan, so if we were just giving you, you know, what we can give you, but whatever the Board requires, and what, working with the building, the zoning, whatever they require us to have, we would have.
So how, you've got 100, 100 people, is that what you have today?
No, sir, no, ma'am.
What do you have today?
50. 50 or more than 50.
I guess my concern is, the way this piece of property is shaped, as you said, you can't, you can't expand, but you also are limited on how you can expand the parking lot off of this and stay the correct distance from.
Setbacks.
Setbacks and stuff. So that's, that's my, my concern with that. Anything else?
No, I don't have a question.
Okay. In that case, do I have a motion either way?
Based on what I've seen and heard, and based on staff recommendation, based on our motion that we deny this application for this period.
Okay. We have a motion to deny. Everybody thinking? Or?
I've looked at this piece of property a couple of times, as a matter of fact, the last couple of days, I was down that way, and I looked at it, and with the cover, with the ground cover that you have now, without being able to, you know, look at the lay of the land, that's some of the reasons that I have said this, and made my recommendation to deny, based on what staff recommendation is.
I will, I will just say this, my, from the area that it's in, being forestry, predominantly forestry, this really doesn't fit in how the county has that area perceived to be, just based on what's all the way around it. I mean, if you look at the overhead, can you go back to the overhead, not the overhead, the?
The aerial?
Aerial. There you go. That's the word I was looking for. There, whoa, there you go. If you look at this, all the way around this, with the exception of a couple of homes scattered on larger lots, I mean, they're decent-sized lots, that still has a forestry look to it, there's nothing else around this that makes you think this is the right place for that. Nothing against what, what you guys are wanting to do, it's just looking at the character area for how, how the county envisions growth, and, and areas, this is designated as timber, forestry, whatever you want to call it, and it has that, that look all the way around it, as far as you can see. So that's my only concern, is placing, placing this in, in that area. So having said that, still looking for a second on Joel's motion to deny. If not, do I have?
I hate that, I hate to say deny, because, like I said, I hate to say it, just, you know, my comments a while ago is first, you know, just, if you don't have a place to grow, is all I'm saying with this property. That's, that's all I'm saying, you don't have a place to grow. Any comments? I think we're done.
All right. So hearing, no second. Do you?
I don't like, I don't like this, not having to say it's being, you're just throwing them under the bus like that, I guess, so, based on the comp, based on the comp plan design, and the staff's recommendations, deny.
Okay. So we have a second. All in favor of the denial?
Ah, no. Is that 5-0 or 1?
Did you?
Yeah.
5-0.
5-0?
And again, it's, it's not what's there, it's where it is, in relation to what's around it.
So this is a recommendation only, it's not the final decision. You will also go to that hearing date before the Board of Commissioners at 6 o'clock in this room, October.
So we're going back to item 3B and 3C, the text amendments for the subdivision ordinance and zoning ordinance. You have, please, here?
Yes. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How do you?
Good evening.
It is still written. So would you like me to read all of this?
Absolutely. You start, you start it up, we'll let you know when you stop.
Wake the look, you get to.
Give us a fun start. What we've done since the last time we were here is, one, made a couple tweaks, and I'll overview those, and then, two, added this memorandum format as a cover to the actual changes in order to summarize. So I guess the first question is, do you all have this document? And I think I would point there first. In the middle of that front page on that document in bold, I, after giving it some description of what this is, I put a note that highlights a couple of key changes from the last time we presented this, and that was last month, when we also had a sort of public hearing outside, and some posters, and I think those have been on display in your office since then, right, Doug? So, a couple of key changes, and this is drawn from input, from that, and from other input, as we, as we work with Doug and staff to refine this. So, key point number one, in comparison with what was presented at that time, we are now proposing, or we now have as draft in these proposed revisions, a minimum lot size in AR of 12 acres. That 12-acre minimum lot size compares with the 2-acre minimum lot size that is currently the status in AR zoning, and it compares with what was previously presented in the draft zoning ordinance revisions as a 25-acre minimum lot size. So the current draft that you have, and that always summarizes, proposes 12-acre minimum lot size in AR for new subdivision of lots. Existing lots of record remain existing lots of record as such, and this does not prohibit construction on existing lots of record that are less than 12 acres. What this does is establishes that any new subdivision creating new lots shall follow that 12-acre minimum lot size requirement, whether it's a minor subdivision or major subdivision activity in AR specifically. So that's obviously, you know, big headline information there. In association with that are changes to the minimum lot width. We changed that from a 300-foot minimum lot width to 225-foot minimum lot width, and that's about proportionality. You know, if you're at a 25-acre minimum lot size, then, then, you know, the wider lot width is appropriate. If you're at a 12-acre minimum lot size, then a 225-foot minimum lot width corresponds to the proposed 1 to 10 lot width-to-depth ratio. A 12-acre lot, if it's 225-foot wide, is about 2,250 feet deep, approximately, I don't have the exact numbers there, but that works with the proposed 1 to 10 width-to-depth ratio as well. So those are a couple of, you know, factors that go along with that change.
And this is for subdivisions only, right?
This is for subdivi, now, I don't want to say subdivision.
Well, subdivided.
Subdivision of land.
No, it's actually just not changing you from being able to build a house on 2 acres in AR to you got to have a minimum of 12 acres.
To create a new lot.
Yes.
In AR, to create a new lot to build a house.
If you bought 100 acres and divided it up. To take your present land, you can't say you couldn't sell 2 acres off for somebody to build a house on.
That's right.
But if you, if you've got somebody next to you that has 15 acres, and they want to buy 2 acres from you, you can, you can.
You could.
Take your 2 acres off of your tract.
You could replat the land, as long as all of the resulting tracts are 12 acres or larger. I think that's how that would be interpreted, right, Doug? This is about creation of any new lot.
So we will have no new buildable lot?
Under 12 acres.
Under 12 acres.
In the AR.
In the AR specifically.
In the AR.
We have other zoning districts, R1 or now R2, and, you know, we've talked briefly about the R3, which is the proposed new rural estate, so that'll be a minimum of 3 acres, so that'll be the closest.
Right. And what we have seen, or what I have seen, I should say, in my experience of updating zoning ordinances in other jurisdictions, is when you go to this much larger minimum lot size in your ag zoning category, they have different names in different places, then you do see more requests for rezoning where the desire is for subdivisions. And what that does is it brings before you and the Board of Commissioners the proposals for subdivisions, whereas in the past, creating subdivisions via minor subdivisions that are approved at administrative level happens more frequently, at least that's what other At least that's what other communities have dealt with. So, um, the other that I pointed out and mentioned here is that we had previously eliminated in all but AR, the allowance for a specialist exception to use manufactured home or a travel trailer as temporary housing, either while a home is under construction or in the case of a certified hardship. And after a further discussion on that, we have restored back to all of the residential categories the option for such in the case of a certified hardship. So the way it reads now in here is that in AR, there's still the option. This was created not too long ago through zoning text amendment, right Doug? Within the past several years?
Well, it wasn't original, I don't think, but, no, I, I think that provision has been in there for quite a while.
It's been in there for quite a while, okay. So we're, in AR, we're not changing anything. We're maintaining the ability to get approval to live in a manufactured home or trailer or a recreational, you know, trailer on a property while you're building a home. And also if you have a case of certified hardship. That, while you're building a home aspect doesn't continue through the rest, through the R1, R2 categories, et cetera. But the hardship, um, aspect of it does. Other than that, as you.
So you're taking away the ability, you're taking away or you adding back the ability to live in an RV while you're building?
We have not restored that. Except, and, and we haven't changed that in comparison with the last draft. The last draft removed that.
Okay, the question is, you're taking it out, so you're saying now, no?
Except for AR, that's right.
Okay, except for AR.
Except for AR, doesn't it?
So in AR, somebody can, can ask for special exception?
To live in a mobile home or travel trailer while building a home.
While building a house.
But only in AR, not even in the rest of AR?
That's right. But.
And the reason for that would be what? Only in AR?
AR, again, rural, larger sort of homestead situation. I think the notion is that in your R categories, R1, R2, R4, et cetera, those are designated for subdivision development. So rather than getting a big piece of land, building my own home out in the country, there you're really, you know, expecting professional development, um, activity. Right. Conversely, the hardship scenario, which has existed, um, that, that seems to be still equally valid in AR category residential as in AR. Make a distinction between certified hardship and home construction scenario. I'm glad to discuss that more. Um, so beyond that, this memo basically takes and identifies all of the proposed changes and summarizes them in a few pages, um, in both the subdivision ordinance and the zoning ordinance. So within the subdivision ordinance, we've got some, you know, simple clarification edits. We've got adding definitions, uh, for consistency. There's a lot of cleanup stuff in there. We're addressing in Article Three, prescriptive rights of way, which is an issue that, um, the planning and zoning department deals with. A good bet when development is proposed or subdivision is proposed along a road where it was not demonstrated, the road was ever dedicated as public right of way. So it's, you know, it's, it's prescriptive is the term. So there's provisions that requires dedication of public right of way now where there was not the case in order to do subdivision. Some other cleanup stuff under that. Article Four, subdivision regulations is where we are adding the new conservation subdivisions provision. That's unchanged from what we've described here below, so that's an option. And that option could be particularly interesting to someone in the AR zone with a new, much larger minimum lot size. There'd be the potential for someone to still do a development that ultimately put homes on smaller lots in exchange for permanent open space preservation through conservation easement, and that open space could still be farmed. So you, you, different areas you see it more, but theoretically it offers an option for farmers to keep a farm in farming activity while still allowing some development. Anyway, and I can talk in more detail about that. In the zoning ordinance, we've already talked about the, um, AR zone change. We've done a little bit of work on definitions as it's described there in Article Two. In Article, uh, Four, we're doing some technical clarifications such as clarifying that use variances are not allowed, which is a, you know, just, I think that's already your standard practice, you don't offer variances for uses, but it wasn't explicitly stated in the code. So there's some things like that that are.
Number, number.
Yes, ma'am.
Number two there, remove text stating that a property owner must act within 12 months following the granting of conditional zoning for a parcel of property. We're removing that, so there's no time limit?
Which section is that?
That's Article Four.
Zoning, Article Four, number two.
You have a page number?
Page number.
Three.
Four?
Oh, unless you're memo.
Page twenty-five.
Yeah, the memo, ma'am.
All right, I, this is the reversion clause, right?
That's right.
You don't give it a body?
Page twenty-five.
Twenty-five of the zoning. Let me, you know, summaries can sometimes be misleading, let me look at the exact language.
But simply deleting the existing clause is there right up there.
All right, um, I don't, anyway, this was discussed before the board of commissioners a while ago. Reversion clauses, um, I've talked to multiple attorneys and I've gotten multiple responses back. But a reversion clause basically, especially for zoning, says that, well, if something doesn't happen within 12 months, three years, five, whatever, it goes back. Okay, well, the best argument that I've heard from the attorneys to, to not allow reversion clauses, in other words, it reverts back if something doesn't happen, is that in the state of Georgia, you have the, um, Zoning Procedures Act, the zoning procedures law. And if you say in one year, two years, three years, it's automatically rezoned, you've taken the power away from the board of commissioners and the planning commission at the time that something just automatically happens. Well, no, the zoning procedure acts is, there's got to be public hearings, there has to be a meeting, et cetera. So, a reversion clause is in my opinion illegal because it subverts the zoning procedures act. So it's not uncommon for us to have illegal things in our ordinances that we need to get rid of. So that's what this is. And so this is the elimination of the reversion clause that basically says you can't set a condition in the ordinance or even by condition it. Well, a year from now, if you don't do anything, it goes back to AR. Or it goes back to this or that. No, cause you're subverting what the state law says, there's got to be procedure. There's got to be due notice and there has to be due process. And so we're taking out a reversion clause.
So, as, as planning and zoning, when we give that, if we gave that condition, can we give that condition that it's subject to a public hearing? If that's the case?
I think, so there's.
Or, or you just, you just, we just approve something and it stays out there forever and ever and ever?
There's a difference between specifically applied and general conditions. And this reversion clause is basically a general blanket condition. When you and ultimately, of course, when the board of commissioners approves conditions specific to a rezoning, those apply specific to a property. And they're, you know, they could be challenged based on the nature of the condition, but they're considered valid because they're produced through the process with public notice and public meetings.
So in that stance, you could put a time limit on that?
In that stance, you could, I mean.
So we can put it, so we have to be particular to put it?
Well, and I'm suggesting that we talk to the county attorney, cause this might be one of those things the planners don't agree on.
Yeah.
To me, a reversion clause is a reversion clause is a reversion clause. And anything subverts the process a year from now, six months from here, three years from now, is not proper with the zoning procedure.
The safest procedural way to go about it, if you, if it is the strong intent of elected and appointed officials to not allow conditions to persist past a certain point in time in the future, is to mark your calendar and then bring it back up as a county initiated rezoning, if at such point in time, that's necessary.
But I would suggest this.
County always has that option.
To, is that you set a condition that says, in one year, two years, three years, we want this whole thing to be brought back to us for us to evaluate.
That's what I'm asking, we can do that.
So we have to make sure we do that on each.
That's not reversion, that's just.
Y'all bring it back, we want to know what's going on.
That's a requirement, if you're going to get this, then this is what we, you have to do.
We've got to add it on each individual.
That's fine, as long as we can do that.
And that's not an automatic reversion to the old zoning. It just says, we need notice in X amount of time, we want to know what the status is.
That would effectively be direction to the staff from the planning commission and the board of commissioners saying.
Cause I don't think we just need to give court block to people that, once we pass something safe, from here on out, you can do this no matter what, whoever, however.
But all of a sudden, 10 years from now, something pops up, they say, well, you don't prove that 10 years ago.
You know, it reverts back to us so that we can have some control over things that might not be going or we may have changed some, some ideas about things that, that we can have a little bit of control over stills again. And we'll have to add that, make sure we're on any of our approvals in the future that we add that type of time frame what we see fit.
I think the key point is if challenged based on this reversion clause, it is likely that it would not hold up. That's our, our, yeah, again, as non-lawyers, but having talked to lawyers about.
Even if we put that condition?
No, no, based on the way it's written out.
Oh, okay, all right, that's fine. As long as we can put that, that wording in there, then that's fine.
Yeah, we just make sure we do it on each one.
Um, Article Five, uh, page three of that, uh, regarding home occupations as a permitted removes. Section five oh four A.
Yes, so what we have done in all these cases, home occupations has been included as a permitted use, whereas a home occupation is technically an accessory use. It's been included as a principal or primary use, but a home occupation by definition is an accessory.
Madam Chair, that's just cleanup of cleanup.
That's fine, that's fine.
We're taking advantage of cleaning up some of the stuff that should have, not be in here anymore. And, um, in, in the time I've been here and before, could you imagine if every home occupation had to come before you for review? We have.
Oh, no, I'm just, I'm just clarifying because when you say revised, you don't know anybody reading this out in Never Never Land.
Right. It's being, it's going to be listed as an accessory use by right, which is the way we've been administering it as long as I've been here. So you're still going to have the accessory use by right, but it's not a principal use and it certainly doesn't need to be a special exception to that.
And so for clarity, that was under Article Five, I think you referenced that. Number, number two says removes section five oh four A. And then if you look down at number five, it says add section five oh four C-16, revise to include home occupations as permitted accessory uses. And that's the way it's presented in each of these, um, in the summary in each of these. Taking it out of one section, putting it in a different section, under a different heading.
Madam Chair, just for procedural things, sort of, we're talking about this over the last week or two. I certainly would understand if the planning commission doesn't want to overall recommend approval for every single one of these changes because you may not have had time to digest all 100% of them and understand them. I think the critical thing is, number one, I hope we're listing all the more controversial potentially issues here where you see them in the memo there, the summary. And then if you just, if there's some recommended changes that you don't like, some of the things that you're hearing, you want to recommend changes to this draft, maybe that would be the process you do is, you know, we see this draft, but, you know, on page X, we recommend, you know, this instead of that or something like that. Rather than having to identify item, you know, if we have a number of how many changes are recognized, some of them are very minor, and then some of them, as you've just discussed, are like AR, where, yeah, you're, you're going from a two acre minimum to a 12 acre minimum in the subdivision ordinance. Uh, I want to call out something that's been discussed in the past. Again, y'all don't see subdivisions too often, but one of the things that has come up in the past is that very often in Upson County, there is no dedicated right of way. It's a prescriptive easement for a road. So somebody will come in and want to, you know, they've got their property and they want to cut it up into pieces, subdivide it, and they're on a prescriptive easement. In other words, they're technically, their lots come to the middle of the road, but the county's been maintaining it for years. So in the past, and this was a few years ago, we'll see what the board of commissioners thinks, is they said, hey, why don't we say, we're not going to subdivide your property until you give us the easement that's prescriptive anyway, that we've been maintaining for all these years. And that will be required, or we're just not going to subdivide your property. So that's in here, I'm not sure that we've discussed it, that's in the subdivision ordinance, you'll see that paragraph. And so if that's something that you want to discuss. Another one in the subdivision ordinance is, now you are familiar with this, is sometimes there are variance requests and there are waiver requests. What has been suggested by staff in discussions we've had is maybe if they're not following the letter of the law, that the appeal board for that isn't the planning commission, it's the board of commissioners. So if it comes to you and it meets every requirement of the ordinance, the subdivision ordinance, you approve or recommend denial. I, I report to you in my opinion as staff, whether it meets it. But if there's some rules they don't want to follow, rather than you hearing the variances and waivers, that would go to the board of commissioners.
Worth recommending.
If you don't like this, if you would rather, you know, they could not go to them, well, that can be a recommended change you would like to see from this draft is, no, we still want to hear all the waivers and the variances. But that's a significant change. There aren't a whole lot in the subdivision ordinance, but that's one of them, along with dedication of right of way.
And I think the way we've done that, that's in Article Two of subdivision regulations in the summary memo at the very bottom of page one of the memo. So it's revising section seventy-eight, sixty-six, seventy, sixty-seven, to make the board of commissioners the decision authority for subdivision ordinance variances and waiver requests with the planning commission providing recommendations. So it turns subdivision variances and waivers into the same process as for zoning, where you make a recommendation, the board of commissioners makes the decision.
So, and I'm probably going back on stuff that you guys talked about last meeting when I wasn't here. So the guy out there today that's got eight acres, he splits that eight acres into, it's not worth anything because he's going to split it into two four acre tracts. Can't build on either one of them.
And technically can't split the eight acres without rezoning.
Of course, they can build.
They can build on the eight acres.
He can build on the eight acres because it exists today.
That's correct.
But if he has two kids and he splits four acres and four acres, you are not going to be able, as an AR tract, you're not going to be able to build on that.
Well, under what's proposed, he would not be allowed to subdivide the eight acres.
Because you can't, no?
Because of the minimum.
So what's the, what's the, is that 12 acres the smallest tract in, outside of R1, R2, R3 that you can build a house on in Upson County?
Well, you'll now have the R.
RE as well, which is a three acre.
It'll be three acres. But in that area located?
And you can put an RE anywhere you have an AR?
With exception, necessarily not. It's, it's certain area located, so you're cutting, like I've got five acres, you know, this property beside me. And if I wanted to, you know, cause it's already five acres, I could, you know, I, I could deed it to one of my kids and I could build on it.
Right.
But if I wanted to deed it to two of my kids, they'll have to really like each other and live on the same piece of property.
In the same house.
They can't live in the same house.
Well, that would be you.
Well, you can, there is the option to put multiple dwelling units on in a single parcel. So in AR, you've got any existing lot of record that of course gets health department approval for, you know, septic system and so forth. Uh, if you can build a, if you can get health department approval, then you can build a primary residence and an accessory dwelling unit on the property. And then if it's large enough, you can do a primary residence and a secondary, because the secondary primary residence is allowed. a secondary primary residence is allowed.
We need to change that.
We modified the acreage requirement.
We didn't talk so much-
All these people that's got 10, 12, 11 acres for conservation purposes.
I think we matched it at the 12.
But you know they're gonna do what they wanna do.
So they have a second option after the property.
You know they're gonna do what they wanna do.
I don't like anything about the 12, but that's-
There's a question. Can I have five minutes before y'all get through? I was waiting for this right here to happen.
Yeah, and this is advertised as a public hearing, so-
Will y'all continue to, did you continue it?
No, but I advertised it.
You what?
He advertised it.
He advertised it as a public hearing.
Okay, so do I have a motion to open it?
I'll make a motion, I'll second it.
Oh, I'm in favor. Yes, sir.
My name is Marvin Easton. I live on Birdsong Road. I have 25 acres. I no longer can take care of. Me and my wife, we're gonna drop out five acres in one corner and build small log here and finish out with town. And I don't know what to do now since y'all come up with this 12-acre thing.
The county commissioners. The county commissioners did that, the last month.
I would suggest you get that, get that surveyed off before this goes through.
Survey is coming first of October.
Well, there's already moratorium. There's a moratorium for six months, moratorium, yeah. That was the last, the last county commissioners meeting that they created a six-month moratorium. It proposed was 25-acre minimum, and there was so much public outcry, they cut it to 12, but six-month moratoriums were the county commissioners did at their last, that's meeting.
Wow, I didn't know that.
So they're not gonna do anything until six months?
No, they keep you from doing anything for six months.
Oh.
You and everybody else.
That was put in place at the lands county commissioners' meeting.
So there's no rule now governing what we do?
No, there is.
There is.
There is.
They put that six-month moratorium.
It's basically a six-month trial, I guess is the best way I could put it. They put out a six-month trial on this for that 12-acre minimum, is what they've done for six months.
Well, it's not necessarily a six-month trial on that. It's not in yet. They're saying you just can't survey anything off less than 12 acres.
Right, until they, because they didn't want a rush. So in other words, they're trying to decide what that new minimum acre will be, so that people wouldn't rush out and let's rezone everything now and have 10 subdivisions with two-acre lots. We'll put a moratorium on until we make the decision, and I certainly think that it'll be decided before the six months or something.
So if you have 25, you could split it into two 12 and a half and still be, at this point, you could still do that right now, even the way it is right now, but you couldn't do a 20 and a 5, you could do two 12 and a half.
There's 20 good acres of good hunting, it's gonna be on the Florida market before long.
You shouldn't have any problem, based on what I know about Birdsong Road and those roads down there, you shouldn't have any problem at all selling them.
You don't wanna sell them.
You can't buy them on five acres.
You can't make it work yourself.
During this moratorium, could he come to a, come to us with a rezoning for that area or?
Nothing to stop that. Nothing to stop it, R1, R2, R5 for a single family. That it could be rezoned to propose rezoning, and then it could be split to, right, and remember, the R, all those are one-acre minimums, there's no maximum. So there's no maximum, it could, R1, which minimum is one acre, but you can split into five, but the board of commissioners has to agree to rezone.
Yeah, all we could do is make a recommendation to the county commissioners, they'd still have to approve that is your option as it stands right now.
Well, in reality, you said 25?
25.33.
25, I divided it, and he scapped the two 12s.
Well, he don't want to.
He don't want to.
No, I'm saying that is an option.
But he wants five acres and sell the others, is what he's wanting to do.
That and a house.
In other words, he's boxed in at this point.
Yeah, but he could, and that would be, you know, I'm just saying it is an option.
This is how he's been calling me for the last 20 years. He calls me once a year, wants to buy my property.
Currently, there's not a house on the property.
Yeah.
There is a house on the property.
Yeah, the appraisal was $350,000, and he asked me what I wanted, and I told him four, and he didn't bat an eye.
So going back to this, 'cause I had people ask, have been asking me, and I basically said, "Let me get to this, this meeting," but somebody's got 30 acres of land, the person next to them has 10 acres of land, that person wants to survey off of their 33 acres to give them a buffer, two acres, whatever, to sell to the person that's next to them's got 10. There's no problem doing that.
Because the resulting lots would both be in excess of 12 acres, both.
Or is lower than that.
And the principle of it would be, there's obviously the mechanics of the transfer process.
So if you wanna sell three acres, sell, give, whatever, three acres to your neighbor, how do you do that?
You're gonna have to submit a plat, or you're going to sell it, but it's gotta be joined into a single piece of property.
Then it'd have, you'd have to have resurveyed into one parcel. You know, you can't be sitting with a 10-acre parcel and a three-acre parcel, because at that point, neither one of them are billable parcels.
And we have that, we have that issue now. I mean, I can't tell you how many times subdivisions of property where, let's take a little piece here and join it over there, that's happening now.
But if you share a property line, you can't carve off something less than 12 acres, a lot less than 12 acres, and sell it to that neighbor next door and keep it as a three-acre lot.
I think you said you can, as long as that resulting lot became one D of 12 acres.
But you said if they don't have the necessary-
Well, yeah, but yeah.
It's still listed as two parcels, so it's, neither one of them are billable.
But the other one has, already has a house on it.
Oh, it's already got a house. Then it doesn't matter if it's already got a house on it.
So, but that's what I'm asking, can you sell two acres next door to your next-door neighbor, or are you saying the minimum you can sell your neighbor is 12 acres?
If you have 12.
And keep it as, keep it as a separate parcel.
No, you can't keep it as a separate parcel, it's gotta be absorbed by your neighbor into their lot.
I guess the way to look at it, I think, is that the end result of any future subdivision activity, minor, major, otherwise, must be all lots that are compliant with the new minimum lot size. If a lot has changed, then it needs to be compliant with the minimum lot size.
But you're not, when I'm creating a subdivision in Upson County that's got 12 acres on each track as a subdivision.
No.
I tend to agree with Johnny. I think that, I mean, I knew the 25 acres was egregious, but I think the way it actually still is too, when you look at it from the standpoint of-
Well, I mean, you look at how many lots, you look at how many lots here are-
Well, just in the example, if you had 10 acres and you were splitting it between two children, that's a five-acre lot, that's, I think 12 is, it's still, I knew 25 was, for sure, but 12 sounded better, but the more I think about it, I don't know that I can, I think that needs to be lowered tremendously.
You think about how many families have-
Lot's usually as low as three acres.
25, let's say you got 50 acres, and you got five kids.
Yeah.
You can't even split that.
Well, if you got 10 acres, you got two kids, you're still shot.
Well, it is, but I'm just saying, even bigger tracts of land that people have-
I understand what we're trying to gain, but I think you do limit people too much on that 12 acres, I think that's-
We're adding too much governmental restriction.
Yes, yes, definitely.
I wonder who's that kid this was.
Well, I mean, I'm not so sure you couldn't drop it to three in reality, because you've got a lot of, you know, three to five, I think five would definitely be the least that I think that I could really bow to, because, I mean, there again, you know, 10-acre lot, somebody might only want to divide it between, well, so they have three kids, I mean, three kids, and do have, and only get three apiece. And the 12's too much, yeah, there's no doubt. 25's way too much. 12, I think, is still too much to what that number might, should be, in my opinion, three to five.
If I could have one clarification that I didn't mention earlier, but I did in previous meetings, just to put this under mind. So there's a relationship, as you know very well, between the comprehensive plan, as it was adopted, and zoning. So we updated the comprehensive plan, and an end result of that was making a distinction between generally the north-northeast section of the county, which the comprehensive plan defines as active agriculture, and the balance of the county, west, south, lighter green, darker green on the map. The balance is described as generally forestry, I forget the exact name we gave to the classification. And the distinction is for the active agriculture area, we describe the appropriate level of residential as very low density, for the balance as low density. Previous comprehensive plan described all as low density. And the comprehensive plan makes that distinction for the active agriculture area based on a couple factors. The soils condition, we included in the comprehensive plan, shows the prime farmland soils map, and it shows the concentration of prime farmland soils in that northern and northeastern part of the county. And then also the public input concerning development within areas where there are active farms, that's exactly, I guess, if that's right.
I still like you, like you're doing all with your-
Right, and that's not, that's not an argument for 12, or 13, or 10, or 15, or whatever, just making the point that in a future consideration, whatever the minimum lot size is established as, there will still be our categories, RE, R1, R2, et cetera, that will allow smaller lot sizes if rezoned. And so the comprehensive plan speaks to-
They request a rezoning, and we can come before us, and we could potentially approve and then go to the county commissioners.
But it still creates more, more, more time, more effort of a rezoning, and then you look at, you know, everybody screams spot zoning, and if you had this AR track and you wanted to do this, rezon that, then if we, if we passed, if we went with it to send to the commissioners, it's spot zoning, and it creates a situation that nobody here seems to like, you know? And if we sent it to them, they're gonna-
I think we would pass most everyone that came to us anyway.
We would pass it, but I don't bet that that would go beyond.
Let me add this to the mix. You know, when you're talking about AR, and you start getting out of AR, you start handicapping people with what they wanna do with the property. Am I right?
Yeah. In this case, like Mr. Easton, you're handicapping him for, you know, you just cut him off the knees for no reason.
Well, you know, you start talking about farm animals.
Yeah, I definitely said 12 too.
And to sort of expand on what Lee was saying, what do you want Upson County to look like in the next 10, 15, 30, 40, 50 years? That's what you're charged with, and we are. If you wanna stay rural, you want farms, you want cows, you can't allow two acres, two acres, two acres, because you're suburbia. And I want, I hear this a lot, it frustrates me. Oh, growth is coming. It's only coming whatever you allow. So if you allow two acres across the county, you're gonna get two-acre lots, and you're gonna get the population. Planners, this is if you have the time, we can actually calculate, based on the current zoning, what the probable population would be based on the density of what we've got now. Then every time you add two acres, or five acres, or something, that population keeps going higher and higher, for the residential, obviously, to the point where you can make a calculation. Okay, we have a new subdivision, we know that in a typical subdivision, it's only one acre, we have 2.3 family members, we just up the population by X. Every time you take your five, or 10, or 20-acre farm, oh, I got two kids, let me give them one acre. Well, maybe my grandkids, give them two more acres. And all of a sudden, you've subverted the fact that your minimum is 12, 20, 50, forget preserving agriculture, because of the pressure. We've had, you know, complaints about values and millage, and I'm not an appraiser, we need them to address this, but one of the major factors in how your taxes go up in the millage and what your properties worth is comparable sales. What did the next-door neighbor's property is sold for? My evaluation is half of what that is, but it just sold. I can prove what property will sell for, 'cause my neighbor just sold it next door. Well, that's gonna raise your rates, and so that's gonna make the property more expensive. If you want agriculture, if you want large land, you can't have that next door, because all of a sudden, I've got all these two-acre lots next to my farm, number one, you're gonna get complaints, even though they came in last, you're gonna get complaints about the pigs and the crops, and the cows, the smells, the whatever. Even though they bought right next to it, doesn't matter, there's still gonna be complaints, and you say, "Well, we don't care, you knew what you're buying next to you, you should've." But the value of the property's gonna start to go up too. I can't keep my farm, 'cause all these little houses around me are selling for all this, well, my gosh, that sold for a half, you know, well, $200,000, $250,000 for one acre, and I've got 50 acres. Well, that, does that mean all 50 acres are now worth a quarter million dollars, 'cause that one acre right next door did? Again, those are appraisers, but this is the big picture you've gotta decide. And ultimately, the five people who are elected to have that vision, you know, they created a complaint with your advice, and they're gonna do the zoning the same thing. If you wanna be suburbia, the smaller lot, come on suburbia, come on growth. If you, and I'll be honest, if you wanna stay agriculture as a planner, I'd say you should need 40 or 50 acre minimum if it's agriculturally zoned. That will help you preserve your forestry and your cattle farms, et cetera, and anything else across.
In that case, do you need a agricultural-only designation?
You could do that.
That agricultural-residential, AR, maybe, I'm not saying it needs to stay at two, I'm saying it definitely doesn't need to be 12. But in that case, you go out in the light green and dark green on here and say, "Okay, these are considered forestry, active agricultural," and I don't know why dark green is considered parks, recreation, and conservation at the bottom. I don't know why that wouldn't be forestry and-
I think that there's a dark green, and then there's a darker green.
Yeah, dark green, dark, dark green, this green says parks, recreation, and conservation.
I think that's actually, it's, the printout's a little difficult there, but if you look at forestry, the vast majority of it is forestry.
Okay, all right, I'll go with that.
It's real often how the things are darker.
So then the forestry and active agricultural, maybe that needs to be bigger tracts farther out in the county?
That's basically what they proposed.
Which is there. But you're putting it on AR that's two miles from town.
Well, and so in those cases, an AR, and again, purpose of discussion and clarity, and I don't wanna bring up a point about the conservation use program and the 12 acres as well, but the, an existing AR-zoned piece of property that's closer to town, that's in, if you look at the map again, there's a brown area that's to the west and extending up to the north of Thomaston, and that's called rural estates category, I believe. That's the area that would be intended and recommended for rezoning to the new RE category, which allows a three-acre minimum lot size, or to R1 either, particularly the RE scenario there. So those AR-zoned properties that remain closer into the city, rezoning is appropriate, and the county could go even go as far as to county-initiate rezoning of those properties if seen, you know, appropriate. But, good?
I'm sorry, I definitely followed-
Yes, sir, come on. Being still going, you're fine. Sorry. So there's, you know, there's always a play between the zoning map and the comprehensive plan, and of course, you see that every month as rezonings are requested. So that which is AR now doesn't necessarily have to remain AR, but this does introduce, the larger lot size does- the larger lot size does introduce more rezonings, more rezoning requests, from AR to a different category of logic. To the point that Doug was making about valuation of property in rural areas, you're probably all familiar with the Conservation Use Program, that you can place ten acres or more in a tract, in a Conservation Use Program, which downwardly impacts your tax obligations.
Well, with this, now, with this, now, the county has done, did compensation, twelve acres, didn't it?
So the twelve acres.
Twelve, when you have a house on it, it's gotta be twelve.
That's right.
So that'd be fourteen, if you got a house on it.
No, no, well, it's true, still, to get the conservation, you gotta have ten vacant or twelve with a house.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
And that's, that doesn't change that, and in theory, I mean, if you're really looking at it from a tax standpoint, by giving them the twelve acres, and limiting them to the minimum twelve acres, you've actually cut your tax, the amount of taxes you can collect, because now everybody's gonna have a lot that they can claim conservation on, or if you cut it down lower than that, in theory, some of them are gonna take, let's say, if you took it to five, or you took it to ten, now they've got a ten-acre lot, they can't claim conservation on.
You're gonna get more taxes.
You're gonna get more taxes out of it, so, uh, when you're looking at it from a tax, strictly as tax standpoint, the twelve acres is, is just as bad as.
Well, on a lot-by-lot standpoint, perhaps, but, I think when you do a tax analysis of what subdivision-scale land, one-acre, two-acre lots, contributes versus demands in public finance, it's always a negative scenario until your home price is in the four or five hundred thousand dollar range. So for homes that are under four or five hundred thousand dollars, you're paying more in public funds for infrastructure schools, et cetera, than you're getting for taxes. Whereas rural land, you know, the larger the lot, the more, the more rural the use, the less demand of public services. None of those studies are precise, in my opinion, it's given a general notion of the reality of things, but that is a pretty consistent finding, that commercial land is net positive for local governments, contributes more in tax revenues than demands in services industrial, the same, typical residential subdivisions, it demands more in services than it contributes in taxes. And usually, rural agricultural land contributes more in taxes than it demands in services, because it demands so little in services. A tw- a, a home on a twelve-acre lot, maybe that's a very key man scenario, I don't know, it's hard to, it'd be hard to peg that specifically.
Which, I mean, other than the moratorium, in theory, they could kind of ask for a rezone to below the twelve, to change it to something they can do at below twelve-acre lot, but it's just, the requests are probably gonna go up drastically.
And the rural estate, I think, you know, the added category that's described in here is, um.
Three acres.
Yes, three acres, creating a three-acre zone.
Where, where is that?
With standards, so that's.
There's a chart in the back of the book. You got the book, my time, very last, toward the back, there's a chart, it has those.
Okay, yeah, 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 yeah.
And so in the zoning ordinance, creating a new Article VIII, or adding Article VIII, which is a rural estate district, which is low-density, three-acre minimum lot size, and then a certain amount of rural development quality standards associated with that, related to setbacks, and landscape preservation, and fencing, and things along those lines.
Well, what I need to do, Doug, is solve my situation.
Well, I'd have to look at your particular property, but, and Lee and I had the same discussion, because we know it, but I wanted to give my grandkids, my aunt, my uncle, my niece, my kids, grandkids, this one acre, two acres, now I can't do that. That's true unless you rezone, and then the Board of Commissioners, and this body's gonna have to deal with those requests, and see where that's gonna go. Again, where does Upson County want to go, and what do you want to be? Not just tomorrow, not just next year, but in the next twenty, thirty, forty years. If you want to be a suburban county, hey, two acres, two acres, two acres, now there's another issue that I brought up, and that's not for this body, it's a, but, every single lot is a straw in the aquifer in the ground. No one, to my knowledge, is figuring out what's going on down there. So every time we stick another straw down there to suck water up, we have no idea what's gonna happen. Hopefully, Upson County in the future will do some monitoring and figure out what's going on down there, but obviously, that's another thing, is we don't have infrastructure that's considered urban. You don't have a county, you don't have a sanitary sewer system, and we don't have a community well system, except in a couple of isolated spots. That means a well every place you go, that means a septic tank every place you go. What's the long-term effect of that? We need to start measuring, and that requires money to analyze that, and as your county planner, I make that recommendation today, we need to start, especially the aquifer, we need to find, figure out what's going down, down there, because of all of a sudden, wow, we've had a whole neighborhood, and everybody needs a new well. Well, something's going on in that, that neighborhood, because you got twenty, thirty, forty wells, they're all using whatever they're using, no limits, and it's like, okay, well now we've got all these failures, what do we do? And as we know, everybody turns to government for the solution first. Heck, when you have an argument with your next-door neighbor, they come to my office first, and take, settle what's, what Joe's doing next door. So I, not only, with the decisions you made tonight, and the ones you make in the future, these little bitty ones, you know, when an applicant comes in here, they're looking at what they want to do and their piece of property, and that's not our job. Our job is to use the comp plan and the zoning to look at the long-term future and the broad future, broad future for what's good for the county right now, and for the future, and that's why you have a comp planning of zoning, because we're not gonna be here forever. There were people that put all these rules into place before we got here. We're administering rules that were developed in nineteen ninety-five. I wasn't here, you weren't on this board, even you weren't on the board, you were in the two thousands.
I was.
He was on the board in the two thousands, early two thousands, but, none of us were here in ninety-five to make the initial rules. But that sets, you know, somebody decided AR's gonna be two acres, in my opinion, that was a big mistake back then, but we administer the code we have. So all we can do is, again, while you're looking at the narrow perspective of the people that come here with their applications, please have the bigger, longer view also, and what's in that best interest. In the conversations you've had in the past, and the Board of Commissioners have had, we want to tend towards being rural, not so much suburban. I'm sorry, but that's the conversation I've heard. I've heard nobody say, we want to be Gwinnett County, we want to be DeKalb County, nobody. As a matter of fact, those people are coming here saying, I don't want what I've got up there. So that sort of lends credence to, we need larger lots.
I don't, I don't disagree with what you're saying, I, I tell people all the time, we used to be, if we had a traffic jam in town, we knew who caused it, we don't anymore. What I don't agree with is going six times higher than what we are today, to form that minimum. I, I don't, one, I don't think that's fair to the property owners that are out there today, that bought their piece of property knowing what they, they had. I get it, they, are they gonna split it up five ways? Maybe it's, if it's sold, it becomes a new, it has to follow that, that track, a new owner. I don't know how you do that.
Well, that's sort of the way it is now. If I own a four-acre tract, a five-acre tract, a six, a seven, an eight, a nine, a ten, eleven, I can build on it. I can't subdivide it, but I can build.
You can, right. But that's what I'm saying is, a, a owner today that has ten acres should be able to do what they want to do with their ten acres, but if they sell it, that new owner should be held to these.
Current development rights for those ten acres allow notionally subdivision into five lots, two acres each, in AR without rezoning. So what's proposed here changes that, definitely.
Well, it's already changed.
It's already.
Well, they could still, I mean, if they sold that ten acres, they could still build on it, do whatever they want to, just like they could before, but they just can't divide it into two six acres, or, the proposal is that they can't divide that ten acres into two five acres. You know, if they still build on it, do anything they can do, that ten acres, they don't have to increase it, they just, if they divide it, if they can't divide, what the proposal is, they can't divide it less than twelve.
Other communities.
It only, only goes to division, not, not what is currently needed out, or planted out in, in sizes, it's just only division.
I've worked through similar discussions and circumstances of the counties looking to do similar things, inherit, who, you know, current groups of elected officials and appointed officials who inherited a very similar circumstance of your AR, and did planning very similar to what we did here last year, and then sought to make regulatory changes, similar to what we're talking about here. And, um, and they ended up with solutions, you know, tailored to, to their needs that came through the discussion. As you know, of course, the Board of Commissioners is gonna make the decisions on this, what I would encourage, as you have discussed this, and as you consider it, is that you make a very specific recommendation, detailed recommendation, to the Board of Commissioners, as opposed to just, we like this, we don't. Because there are a number, you know, in working with the Commissioners, there are a number of options, it's not just simply the lack of why, it was a, you know, it's a gray area, that could be worked with, as we go through the next step, so I'd just simply encourage you to be very specific in.
But obviously, they're, they're in favor of twelve acres, because that's what, where you are today.
That's, that's our understanding, yes, but whether, you know, nuances might be considered, very, and might be considered, because there's one, it's one thing taking an existing, sorry, it's one thing taking an existing thousand-acre tract, and there are some, and having a minimum lot size of twelve acres applied to that, it's a different thing, as we've, we've been mostly talking about the existing five, ten, twenty-five-acre tracts. It's a different matter to apply a twelve-acre minimum lot size to that, so there's, you know, perhaps, different approaches that could be considered.
Are you doing the project in Woodbury? They have a similar deal going on over there.
Not, I, I, no, not in Woodbury, I am familiar, Meriwether County has, and we studied, and I think in, in the first time I was here, I showed a slide of the comparative analysis we did with surrounding counties. And so, Meri, of all the broader surrounding counties, Meriwether has.
Woodbury is in Meriwether.
Yeah, Woodbury's in Meriwether, right. They, Meriwether has the largest, they have a twenty-five-acre minimum lot size.
What is the expectations from us, the County Commissioners, at this point? Well, that's what we talked about earlier, if you want to make specific recommendations for, especially against, if you've got changes, or you just want to pass it on, saying, we've had two meetings, and we've reviewed it, we're not really gonna make any recommendations, you could do that. The only thing I'm gonna encourage is that whatever you decide to do, they, they really would like to get this adopted, in whatever form, by the end of the year.
Are they holding additional public hearings?
Well, we've, yes, they're gonna hold a public hearing themselves, you know, whether you decide to hold this, this month, or forward it, it's.
So I'll say right now, I'm asking for a motion to continue the public hearing for this, to next month, hold the public hearing open till next month.
One second.
Hold it there.
Doug, is that a procedural option, given it's already done once?
He advertised the public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you go over there, don't go close to a place somewhere called the Cove. That's right, son, don't go to the Cove.
Make sure you buy some moonshine.
Probably quit selling that one, I mean.
You won't, you won't come back.
It's got a little bit different, stronger, it's got a little bit different form nowadays.
Alright, so, next item is Commissioners' announcements.
I don't have any.
No.
Alright.
No.
Next item is Secretaries' announcements.
I'm the Secretary.
It's good, it's good to have you, left-hand person here tonight.
And I couldn't forget you either.
You did, you sure did.
We tried to cross-train the department, so.
The first time she was here, when she did, roll power.
Oh, got it, got it. Alright, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Yes.
Hold it there.
Adjourn at seven fifty-four, is that on there?
Mike, I can hear my cows calling me now.
I don't know who wants this, but I don't want it.